For thirty-two and a half hours per week effective August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, and Item P is approved Beth Miller as a long-term substitute at OJ Neighbors for Michelle Correio from August eleventh through November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Have a motion on the revisions. Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the revisions to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes and the agenda is revised. At this point, I would open up to anybody from the audience that would like to comment on any of the agenda items tonight. If there is anybody that would like to let us know and we will be sure to give you ample time. Anyone? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. We have the consent agenda. We have minutes from our August first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Claims, donations, and financials. I would accept a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion. Do we have a second? Motion and second discussion.
On financials, I think you'll see that we've already turned the corner on the education fund. It's already back in the positive so that, you know, I told you that would be short term. So, and it'll just get better from here on out. So that fund is fine. And the other one is gonna be where it's at. So, but the education fund is already back in.
Any, any questions or concerns on anything about the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next regular scheduled board meeting will be Tuesday, September second, two thousand and twenty-two at Wabash City Hall, two oh two South Wabash Street, Wabash, Indiana, at six P M. Yes, Labor Day is Monday, the fifth, so the next meeting will be on the sixth.
You said the second.
No.
No, I said sixth.
You said the second. Okay.
It is the sixth. If I did say the second, I-
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Sixth. We have a few items of communications. There's no old business, new business. Board will hear presentation on two thousand and twenty-two. I read results. Doctor Sibley?
Okay, so like I said, I read results were finalized at the State Board of Education last week. So I want to share. I'm not going to project it. We're just gonna look at it this way, which it's a little wonky, but every time I try to share it, it does what it did last time, so. So just a refresher, I read is designed to measure foundational reading skills based on Indiana academic standards through grade three. All of our grade-three students that are enrolled in an accredited Indiana school must participate in and attain a passing score. We administer it in the spring, and then any student that does not pass, we offer a summer remediation and we test again at the end of that remediation. Some students are able to get what's called, what's called a good cause exemption, and students that qualify that for that would be English language learners, students with disabilities or an I E P, or a student who has already been retained twice. And to get those good cause exemptions, the I L P team, the case conference committee, the parents and the administrator would meet and determine, is it appropriate for the student to get this exemption?
Do they apply for that prior to the test or after the test?
After the test. So they, they have to attempt the test and then those committees will determine whether or not to apply the exemption. So I'm gonna share the two thousand and twenty-one and the two thousand and twenty-two results. You can see this was our spring results. So this year in two thousand and twenty-two, we had a hundred and three students that took the test and seventy-four passed. So we had a pass rate of seventy-two percent. That is up from last year's pass rate of sixty-two percent. So that's when all of our students take it the first time. The students that did not pass then are provided with summer remediation, and then they test in the summer. So we had twenty-three students that attended that summer remediation. We, we cannot force them to go to that. Some parents, you know, choose not to, not to send them. Of the twenty-three that attended this year, twelve passed. So we had a fifty-two percent pass rate this summer compared to last year's thirty-nine percent. And then this is our overall data. The number that we really look at is the percentage passing that is right above that number of good cause exemptions. So this year, we had a hundred and four students that took it between spring and summer, and we had eighty-six students or eighty-three percent that were, that passed. Last year, we had eighty-three out of a hundred and eight, so we had a seventy-seven percent pass rate. When you factor in the students that are eligible and receive the good cause exemption, our pass rate then goes to eighty-nine percent compared to last year's eighty-three percent. Looking at the state averages, and that's where we're gonna look at that eighty-three percent because the state number does not consider good, good cause exemptions. So this year, we were at eighty-three percent, and the state average, which includes both public and non-public schools, and you can see there's a significant difference between public schools and non-public schools. But overall, it's had an eighty-two percent pass rate, and we were at eighty-three percent. So we were one percent above compared to last year where we had a seventy-seven percent pass rate, and we were four points below the state average of eighty-one. Now, I did some digging today. I didn't put it on here, but I went back to two thousand and nineteen, which was the year before COVID. We did not do state assessments in two thousand and twenty. In two thousand and nineteen, our spring, summer percentage, so this year we were eighty-three percent, was eighty-five percent. So we were two percent below this year. However, the state average that year was eighty-seven percent. So we were below state average that year. Even though we were higher, we were below state average. So I, I really just want to say congratulations to OJ. You know, our, our teachers, these kiddos would have been in first grade when they, you know, got sent home in March and never came back. So it's not just our third-grade teachers. It's our second-grade teachers, our third-grade teachers, our title teachers, our special ed teachers. You know, anybody that played a hand in this, kudos to you. These, these are really good numbers, and we were excited to see them.
Any questions for Doctor Sibley?
How much longer, I know it's probably really hard to determine, but how much longer do you think we're gonna see the learning loss come out? Like, with, with basically losing very important developmental-
Forever.
Yeah.
Probably. I know. Well, I'm thinking like significant versus, uh, it's probably a very difficult-
And I feel like this was, it, it, I read is a little bit difficult because it's not like I learn where you can look at cohort from one year to the next and really see how are they progressing. But I do feel like we are starting to see some, some gains in that loss that took place.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Item B, approve recommendation to travel to San Antonio, Texas for P L C training in November for teachers and administrators.
So moved.
A motion and a second discussion.
This will be our third group to attend Solution Tree's P L C training. Currently, we have a list of everybody that has been trained. We are at twenty-nine teachers and administrators. This will provide up to fifteen more to be able to be trained. This year, we do have a P L C roadmap that all schools are using to guide the work in P L Cs that is taking place on Wednesdays, and this training is paid for from our Title II funds, which are specifically targeted for professional development. And once we have those allocations and our budget's made, we will be able to get those, get everybody registered. But we wanted to get approval now, so as soon as the D O E has that to us, we'll be, we're able to get registered.
So this is the third group, the, the third time we will send people because we had, we had people that attended for a second time the last-
Yes, this year we are targeting people that have not attended a previous-
That was where I was going with that. Is there interest? Do you see a lot of interest from those that haven't gone yet that are now wanting to attend this?
Yes. We will not go during a winter month again. We learned our lesson on that, and we may look at not going in the summer as well just because it's difficult. It is difficult to get people to give up their summer, and I understand that.
How many of the fifteen that we're looking to send do you anticipate being repeat?
Just myself and Beth. Beth was unable to attend the last one, as was I. But all the rest of them will be first-time attendees.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board? If not, all those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, approve recommendation to pay three hundred and fifty dollars per month as a homestay stipend to Ben and April Moda to cover the cost of room, board, and transportation for Marta Jimenez Delso, our Spanish paraprofessional through the Spanish Embassy's Spanish Language and Cultural Assistant Program for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. The stipend will be paid from September, two thousand and twenty-two through April, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Pardon, should that be two thousand and twenty-three?
April, two thousand and twenty-three. Yes, it should be. So we have a motion?
Yep.
Do we have a second? Motion and second discussion.
This is something that I think we've done for a couple of years now. Ms. Jimenez Delso will be a para at L H Carpenter, and instead of paying her salary, we pay the host family that stipend to help cover their, their expenses for hosting her.
The salary is paid for by the Spanish Embassy, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I M D, accept resignation of Tiffany Brewer as cafeteria employee effective August first, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Motion and second discussion.
We want to thank Ms. Brewer for service to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor of accepting the resignation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, approve recommendation to add L H Carpenter head cook position to the support personnel handbook with increases, which increases the pay rate for that position by one dollar per hour.
So moved.
Motion and second discussion.
In our handbook, we have that position for OJ, but we didn't have that position for L H Carpenter. And so it's just an extra dollar on top of their regular pay for that position. So we wanted to add that for the school year.
Is that paid out of the cafeteria fund or, or is that caps? Okay. All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item F, approve recommendation to hire the following classified staff. Joyce Osborne as cafeteria employee to help train new employees at a rate of thirteen dollars per hour for nineteen point seven five hours per week effective August tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Marquesha James as paraprofessional at OJ Neighbors in the RISE classroom at a rate of eleven dollars per hour effective August tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Adrian Hunt for the high school P E class teacher, teacher aide at eleven dollars per hour for under thirty hours per week effective August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Kennedy Brewer as a part-time special ed aide at Wabash Middle School at a rate of eleven dollars per hour for fifteen hours per week, three hours per day, effective August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Kristen Ford as Wabash Middle School Behavioral Interventionist at a prorated salary of forty thousand dollars effective August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Real quick. Mine says twenty-nine, seven-five. My nineteenth. What? For Joyce's hours?
I say nineteen. Geez, I'm saying all kinds of bet. Twenty-nine point seven-five. We'll get somebody else to read tonight. Clean my glasses or something. Sorry about that. Yes, twenty-nine point seven-five hours. Yeah, no, you're right. So. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and second discussion.
So Ms. Osborne is coming out of retirement to assist with training the many new staff members in the OJ Cafeteria, and we're thankful that she's willing to come in and assist with this. That is paid for out of Cafeteria.
How long do you think we'll need her in that position?
We're hoping that it's only the first semester. I think the entire staff there is new, so, yeah. Ms. James will be working in our RISE room at OJ and is also working at L H Carpenter's after-school program, which is provided by the Y M C A. Ms. Hunt will assist in our P E classes taught by Mr. White, Mr. Wright. And Ms. Brewer with Wabash City Schools taking over the alternative education program, which is being run by Ben Becker in the morning and Jen Smith in the afternoon. Ms. Brewer will cover classes while Mr. Becker is in the alternative ed classroom in the morning. The high school felt like they could cover theirs, but they're gonna monitor and see they may end up having to hire a halftime para as well. And finally, Ms. Ford will serve as our behavioral interventionist. This position is one that's paid for through S R dollars, so it's for this year and next year. She comes to us with a master's degree and experience working at an A B A therapy center for children with autism.
All those in favor of approving the recommendations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Prove the following coaches for athletics for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. Wabash Middle School tennis volunteer, Rog Cole. Wabash Middle School cheer volunteer, Brittany Judy. Wabash High School assistant boys tennis coach, Kristen Ford. Wabash High School cross-country volunteer, Caleb Kelsheimer. Accept a motion. Motion. Do we have a second? Motion and second discussion.
We want to thank these coaches and volunteers for their willingness to work with our student athletes this fall.
All those in favor of approving the recommendations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain. Motion passes. Item H, approve the attached changes to the athletic handbook. Accept a motion?
So moved.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second discussion.
There are some things that we need to work out on this, so I am not ready to have this approved tonight.
So with that-
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table and a second. All those in favor of tabling, item H, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is tabled to a later meeting. Item I, approve Jeff Wilson as a part-time custodian for the middle school, high school at a rate of fourteen dollars, thirty cents per hour for no more than twenty hours per week, effective August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Motion and second discussion.
Mr. Wilson is our mechanic. He inquired about potentially picking up some extra hours in the evening as a custodian. When he was in Marion working at a car dealer, he did some custodial work for I V Tech there, so he does come with experience. And we are grateful to have the extra help in the evening.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item J, accept resignation of Chloe Selig as preschool teacher at L H Carpenter effective August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Motion. Do we have a second?
Reluctantly.
Motion and a second discussion.
Mrs. Selig has taken an administrative position with a nearby school. We wish her the best of luck. Ms., Mrs. Arwood, Ms. Arwood will be taking over Ms. Selig's preschool classroom. And we've already changed teachers' assignments that way. Students weren't getting one teacher and then having to change a few days after school has started.
All those in favor of accepting the resignation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item K, approve transfer of Jenny Taylor from paraprofessional at L H Carpenter to a Little Apache's preschool teaching para at a salary of twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars effective August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
A motion and a second discussion.
Ms. Taylor is going to move into Ms. Arwood's preschool classroom. She was a para last year at L H, and prior to that, she also served as a para at OJ, and we're excited for her to have her own classroom this year.
All those in favor of approving the transfer indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item L, approve recommendation to transfer Kristen Mattern from P L T W teaching para at OJ Neighbors to certified P L T W teacher at OJ Neighbors.
So moved.
Motion and a second discussion.
We had already approved Ms. Mattern to be the teaching para for the Project Lead the Way special. With the donation that we received through the community foundation, this will now be a certified teaching position.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item M, approve Sarah Emmert as homebound instructor for a Wabash High School student for two hours per week at her hourly rate for the first semester of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
So moved.
Motion and second discussion.
This homebound assignment is part of the student's I E P.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item N, accept resignation of Amanda Watson as study hall paraprofessional at Wabash High School effective August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Motion and second discussion.
We want to thank Ms. Watson for her time and service to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor of accepting the resignation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item O, approve Sierra Tresca as Wabash High School study hall paraprofessional at a rate of eleven dollars per hour for thirty-two and a half hours per week, effective August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Motion and a second discussion.
Ms. Tresca will be taking over the position that Ms. Watson vacated. She currently has her background check completed, but we're waiting on some of her paperwork. And so she will get that completed this week and will be good to start next Monday.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item P, approve Beth Miller as a long-term substitute at OJ Neighbors for Michelle Correio from August eleventh through November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Motion and a second discussion.
Currently, Ms. Miller is filling in in our music class. We did have someone reach out to us about the position, and we're anxiously waiting to hear back from the person. We hope it fills quickly, and then Ms., Mrs. Miller will move into Mrs. Correlo's para position while she does her student teaching, and we really appreciate Ms. Ms. Miller's willingness to help at OJ.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
We have had four great days of school. I feel like the switching of start times with the elementary starting first and then running the routes to get the secondary students and them starting at what was almost the same time has been pretty smooth. I did get some feedback from bus drivers about routes and how the start times, the changes have gone. Overall, they said that it's gone well. One said it's even better than I expected. Another one just said, you know, change is hard, and once we get everybody going in the flow, we should be good. I know that the middle school and high school administrators have been extremely happy with the change as it reduces the supervision in the morning. I would be curious to hear from our administrators that are here, when it's, when we have items from administrators, how they feel it's been going. We do appreciate everyone's patience as we go through this change. We will continue to monitor our drop-off times and look at bus routes. We didn't want to make any changes right now because we know when inclement weather hits, we are gonna need a little bit more time. The updates at OJ are coming along, and the building looks great. I will let Mr. Stone share where we are at in that process. And our fall sports are off and running this week. I believe girls golf started last week. So, and just want to wish all our fall athletes and coaches good luck.
Any questions for Doctor Sibley?
What was our count number?
We were at fourteen thirty-two, I believe. Justin, you're looking at me kinda, the numbers, yeah. So we've got some that are showing up in Skyward that I think we still have to track down. I know that we did get two more today, enrollments. And that is something that we will really see because all schools start at different times. So if someone's new to our community, they may not be used to starting until a week or two. So we're just really monitoring that, trying to get Skyward cleaned up that we know that we have an accurate count.
Is that forty-three, thirty-two, K through twelve or preschools?
No, that's K through twelve, yeah.
Is that about typical?
We want it to be at fourteen fifty, is that correct?
I sure would like to be.
Yeah.
We ended last spring at fourteen thirty-seven.
I have a question regarding some stats that I saw from our school that was put out by the Indiana Department of Education on college and career ready. Ours, our students that were followed up on exceeded the state average, is that correct?
Yes, I believe that was the, the two thousand and nineteen cohort, so that's the last data that the D O E has put out. And those numbers are the percentage of students that earned high school credit or earned college credit while they were in high school. So you can just see that our high school is doing a great job preparing our students for their future.
And it speaks to our mission statement. So being able to make sure that our students are college and career ready, and those numbers are proving that. So, thank you to everybody involved in that, and congratulations to the students because they're the ones that, that earned that. Any other questions for Doctor Sibley? Not items from chief business officer.
We'll talk about OJ first. Got tile in, in the lobby, and if you haven't seen it, it looks great. And so it looks really good. Carpet's all done. The main thing they have left to do is get the vinyl covering over the corkboard. And so they, they did get some of it done last week, but they probably have another week to go. They decided they're gonna put some corner guards up above the chair rail on the, on the vinyl. So they still have to do that. They gotta finish up the display cases or whatever you want to call them. They're putting vinyl in the back of those too, so you can hang things in there, and, and the paint. And they gotta touch up some paint around the building. Outside, if you haven't seen it, they cleaned the front of the gym, and it looks amazing. And they were doing some work cleaning up brick. They still have to paint the canopies. They'll do that. They painted the windows up around the gym, which really looks nice. But they're probably a couple of weeks from being done at OJ. And then they'll come over to Coleman and Lake Carpet, and that's a, a week job. And so within a month, we should have everything done. The new flagpole is being poured tomorrow. And so easily by the first football game on the second, they're gonna move it to the right side of the scoreboard. So we do have a, a nice base down there. I may have to go find us another statue or something. They will have the new flagpole up also. So by the time, maybe not the next meeting, but by two meetings from now, I would think everything will be done, yeah, at OJ and at, at the middle school. So, a little, little behind what they would have liked to been, but seeing progress now. I'm sure you feel a lot better.
Because I had thought that, that it was said that there was maybe three days worth of work, just doing the vinyl, and that was it after school started.
Well, the vinyl people didn't work a couple of days, and so that put them behind. They're very shorthanded. There's like two people doing it. So, so we just don't have the amount of worker, except the paint crew's pretty good. Besides that, the amount of workers isn't what they would like.
Did we, did we know that they were gonna be painting and everything during the school day?
Well, we didn't know until we got close. I, I mean, right, like, yeah, no, we didn't know a month ago. We, we knew a couple of days. We gave Beth like two days notice that, that we would, that they wouldn't be done, but. And then he came in and finished the tile on Saturday so that they wouldn't be in there during that time.
How difficult has it been with them in the building, with students in the building?
It's been really, I mean, they really worked with us. We had a couple of obstacle courses going on. From one wing to the other, you had to go like over the monkey bars and down the slide. They've been really good. They, those kids have been great, and so they've been really easy. It's, it's really been very smooth.
The other thing I have, if, I don't know if you haven't seen this, but Mr. McGort worked really hard to get back free passes for all of our students. We haven't had that since before COVID. I would like to, to say thank you to these people. These are the sponsors that made that possible. The Winning Edge, Crossroads Bank, Indiana Farm Bureau Insurance, Brunner Dental, Gorman and Bunge Orthodontics, the city of Wabash, Wabash Casting, State Farm Insurance, Todd Adams- Gorman and Bunch Orthodontics, the city of Wabash, Wabash Casting, State Farm Insurance, Todd Adams, and Manchester University. So those people all stepped up and donated, well, I didn't donate, they they gave the money to the athletic department so that kids could get in games for free. So now all of our students will once again have a athletic pass to get in all events, except for like the county turn your sectionals. And so thank you to all those people. That is a big deal. Really, Floyd did such a great job to get that going before, and then COVID hit and ruined everything. But now he's built, he's able to get it back. So that is great news for our parents and our students. So.
Absolutely.
Hats off to Mr. McWort and thank you to all those sponsors because it's a big deal.
Now we need the students to show up, support our team.
Yes, we do. Absolutely.
No excuses, right? Any questions for Mr. Stone? Items from administrators.
To speak to Dr. Sibley. Question about early arrival. We haven't had really any problems at all. Kids are coming in on time. Dispensals going fine except for our first day. It was a disaster, but second day on, we rocked it. With our car riders, we had a lot of parents that, you know, with our preschoolers and kindergartners, they always want to bring them that first day. Well, that kind of messed up our car tag system, so we would have a car tag read and then we'd have five that didn't go through the car tag and didn't happen. It was a mess that first day, but second day on, we rocked it. So we're off to a good start. And we've not had any real glitches with the new start signs. We've had a couple of students struggling in, but I've made phone calls and parents are aware now, definitely with the school day. It's earlier, so they're like, really? Yeah. But we've done fine. We've done great. Dispensals have been good for us.
Items from visitors. Items from board members. Kristen?
A lot going on, but I did want to thank the new student council members for all their work and hosting all those exciting events. Sounds, I'd love to hear all those things. And congratulations to our OJ students who had perfect scores. That's unbelievable to me. I don't know how anyone does that. So that's really great. And congratulations to the teachers and the staff at OJ and the teacher and the kids for those scores. Those are really great.
Stephen?
I really appreciate the kids coming in and speaking on behalf of the student council. That honestly makes you feel more connected. I've got middle school kid and elementary school kids, so to hear those high school kids really helps. And they do such a nice job. They're well spoken and it's, it's speaks well about their teachers and what they've learned. The IRE stuff is pretty cool. I'm pretty excited for those kids and for the school in general. And then like Mr. Stone said about Mr. McWort being able to get those sponsorships, that's huge. My high school when I was a kid was able to provide this, and it's such a, it gives more benefit to the kids as far as getting to those games. He said, there's no more excuses. It's how you build programs. So I'm excited for the kids and the community. That's all I got.
Ron?
I don't have anything that wasn't already said, so ditto. Just keep it short.
Jason?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think the other thing I really want to point out is super happy about the IRE thing. I have to be. I have my son that was on there. But the other common denominator is my wife, the teacher, the other kids. So like, I can't be any happier or proud right now.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. For me, congratulations to the three students that got the perfect scores. That's that's awesome. Thank you to the staff at OJ for all the hard work that you've put in with that and and getting those numbers up. So appreciate the hard work on that. Welcome back to all of our staff and our students, but especially want to welcome our new students and new staff members. Those who haven't been a part of the Wabash City Schools family before, I think you're really going to like it. So welcome. We look forward to a great year. And with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.